Good evening, everyone. This is the Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, December 11th, 2017. The time on the wall is incorrect. The actual time is 7:03. We're at the North Boardroom. We will begin with a roll call, please. Ms. Van Twyver.
Mrs. Oden.
Here.
Dr. Murataki.
Here.
Ms. Van Twyver is here. Mr. Halliwell. Mr. Mosher.
I'm here.
Mrs. Ziem.
Here.
Ms. Ohensie.
Here.
Mr. Kaufman.
Here.
Mr. Farrington.
I'm here. And just for the record, Mr. Halliwell had a business conflict, work conflict tonight, was unable to attend.
We also have Dr. Mosley, Dr. McKinney, Mr. Donovan, Ms. Thomasetti.
Here.
And Mr. McIntyre. And Dana.
Almost got, almost forgot.
Dana Ogara, Ms. Ogara.
Got everybody?
I think that's all.
Okay, great. So we will continue with the prayer and then the Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Murataki, if you would.
Almighty God, we have the high honor and the serious duty of managing the educational institutions of our beloved city. In our common endeavors, may we find a spirit of unity and understanding which will enable us to face our multiple problems with an objective mind, with justice and charity for all, so that any and all decisions made by us will be for the betterment and greater happiness of all of our fellow citizens. Amen.
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 My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Okay, moving along, we have outgoing board members?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I thought it fitting to just acknowledge the departing board members with a special send-off. I'd like to take an opportunity to acknowledge Mr. George Farrington, Rob Halliwell, Dr. David Murataki, and Mrs. Ziem to discuss their contributions as board members. We are grateful for your service to the City of Nashua. Collectively, your tenure has been far-reaching, impacting the way we teach and the way we work. Your 10-plus years of service are impressive with the service of our school district and our students. Your service alone has totaled 42 years, spanning multiple decades. We are grateful for your leadership of the Nashua School District. You have been at the forefront of many initiatives, positive ones, in our school districts, in all, in our school district, in all areas of the school board work, whether leading the school board or its committee work, task force, and better yet, taking part in school events or school visits to support our students. We are grateful for your belief in public schools. Individually, each of you have brought a viewpoint seasoned through personal and school board experience, and it gives me great honor to recognize you with a Nashua School District acknowledgment plaque that in part reads, "The Board of Education, Nashua, New Hampshire, and recognition of dedicated service to the City of Nashua and its students." Hereby I express sincere appreciation for your work and for your time that you've devoted to our school district. George, thank you for your support and your longstanding investment in student success, including the success of our students with very special and often the most challenging needs. We very much appreciate the contributions you have made to the business of education and to your attention to how we financially support teaching and learning. Thank you, Mr. Farrington, for those long hours that you've spent attending not just your committee meetings, but all of the meetings. You've never been late, you've been on time, and certainly, we all appreciate the time that you've dedicated to the Nashua Public Schools. We wish you well and thank you for all that you've done for our school. Thank you. Dr. Murataki, thank you for all that you have done to bring a spotlight on how we teach by serving for so many years on the Curriculum Evaluation Committee. It is my understanding that you took it one step further and took curriculum courses to make yourself acclimated to what really goes on here at the schools. I know that you've been a student of curriculum development and implementing, and implementation as we are grateful to your support for our, for our kids and the most important things that go on in science, technology. Dr. Murataki, I will say this as a new superintendent coming in, thank you for making us think outside the box. And more importantly, at our last curriculum evaluation meeting, you made us think about drones, you made us think about so many different things. And I want you to know that you inspired this district to really move forward with that initiative. And we're currently working on a drone course. And I think we're gonna maybe, in dedication of you, I don't, we wanna make sure you enjoy it when you're alive, so we'll say like, "Murataki Drone Course" or something, so we know where it came from. Thank you so much for all that you do. Mrs. Ziem, your departure is, as the most senior member of the board, is particularly noteworthy. You have met, you have left an indelible impression on this school district, and thank you. You often refer to Nashua as your adopted home, or our community members as your extended family. Thank you so much. We hope that you know the lasting impact you have had on this school district, on our students, our teachers, and as administrators. I truly thank your thoughtfulness, your caring, your kind words. I personally want to thank you for all of those long nights that you've spent at the curriculum meetings, your, your time in HR, being very fair, but very, being very kind and transparent. I cannot thank you enough for all the time that you've spent in the school district. Thank you so much. I know that Mr. Halliwell could not be here, but I just wanted to publicly acknowledge him for his service here in the district. Thank you for all that you've done to bring added resources to our school district. Among your many investments in our school district, the Donors Choose stand out as one of the most things that you've done in this school because it has been a watershed of unique support for so many classroom-based projects. I know each of our teachers who have benefited from the Donors Choose initiative have made our school district and our kids a much better place to work in. We thank you for your work that you've done with the Para contracts. We thank you for the work that you've done on the finance subcommittees. Your work has left an indelible mark on our school district, and we will certainly miss you. Thank you so much. I'd like to give a round of applause to the four board members who are leaving us, and we wish them well.
We can go now? Moving on, we have the Consent Agenda.
Move to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Seconded by Mrs. Oden. All those in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, say aye.
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 Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, we gotta do a roll call.
Yep.
Thank you for speaking up, Bill.
You ready?
Yep.
Mrs. Oden.
Yes.
Dr. Murataki.
Yes.
Ms. Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Hal, Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Ms. Ohensie.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
And Mr. Farrington.
Yes. It's approved?
Yeah, it is.
Excellent. No items were removed from the consent agenda, any communications outside the consent agenda that anyone's received. Seeing none, we come to the public question, comment, period-limited items on this agenda. All we ask is you give a name and address, please.
Adam Markou for Gilory Lane, President of the Nashua Teachers Union. Sorry about roll call, takes a long time, especially for you, Ms. Van Twyver. Real quick, I just want to wish the departing board members well. We've spent a lot of time together, whether it's negotiations, board meetings, committees, et cetera. We haven't always agreed on everything, but I think we were able to find a way to agree to disagree in a way that allowed us to keep moving forward for the most part. And thank you for your contributions to our district and wish you well moving forward. Thank you.
Anyone else, public comment? Seeing none, superintendent's comments. I'm sorry.
Is this one?
I don't know, try it.
No.
Try the green button. Push the button if you get a green light.
Okay, no, it does.
There you go.
Well, my name's Kristen Peterson, and my husband, Eric Peterson, is here. We have a daughter in the third grade at Charlotte Ave School, and I have good news and bad news to report. So, the good news here, these, these are my daughter's I-Ready scores for reading in second grade. You'll see the green line, she came in very low. 490 to 560 is on-grade level, okay? So, 437 is very low. Eric, maybe walk around so everybody can see how the lines progressed. You'll see that with the three testing periods, she made significant growth in reading. And I know you all have the initiative to get them reading on grade level by grade three, and I truly appreciate this. She was able to, she was able to achieve this 520 because she had Mrs. Tetler, a reading specialist, in the class. She saw her three days a week. She also, because of a grant that started for second grade in January, she was tutored at four days a week in the morning. So she had a lot of intervention, and that's what got her from the 437 to the 520. Here's the bad news. Here are her math scores from second grade. So go around and show everybody her math scores. Her math scores improved by nine points. That's with classroom teacher only. That's no math tutor, and that's no math specialist. So now, I come to you with her first I-Ready score of third grade. She's scoring a 434, well below grade level. Now, if you go based on history, her grades are gonna stay stagnant, and she's gonna remain below grade level at age, grade three, and then grade four, and then grade five, and then grade six. So my question to you, or my plea to you, is please help us. Please help us, please help us. I want my daughter to succeed, and she needs help. I know the Londonderry, Amherst, and Concord School districts have math specialists in their classrooms. I know that because I've spoken with them. I know that because I've spoken with third-grade teachers. So why, City of Nashua, do we not have math specialists in the classroom? This is what I'm pleading to you. I don't know if we have it in the Title I schools. Unfortunately, Charlotte Ave is not a Title I school, but it still has failing students. So I don't know what to do, except her father and myself are working overtime, spending less time with our daughter, putting her in after-school programs, so we can earn more money to pay a tutor only two days a week. I don't even know if statistically that'll help, just the two days a week. The teacher can only do so much, and there's no support. So I don't know who to go to next. Any answers?
I want to thank you for coming in, and I want you to tell everybody here that we don't know each other, because I'm gonna talk about this later tonight.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Not specifically to, obviously, because we don't know each other.
No, my daughter's not the only one.
No, I understand.
And, you know, unfortunately, she's above a 504, but she's below average.
Sure.
And that 504 to below aver, 504 to average group is really missed. And, you know, we saw that, we missed her in second grade.
No, we, I'm a strong advocate of that third grade, getting people on grade level, establishing a foundation, and I will speak to that later this evening, so. And thank you for sharing this information.
Thank you.
Mr. Farrington, can I just add something? I feel compelled to say to you, it's wonderful that you came here. It's always wonderful when parents care enough to take their time to come down and share with this board. I would encourage you, this presentation, it was drop-dead wonderful.
Thank you.
I would encourage you to take it to the Alderman. I have to tell you that it's all about resources. I'm 12 years.
No, I know.
It breaks your heart.
I know.
But you have to choose, you cut this.
Just so you know, the Londonderry superintendent laughed at me when I said I was gonna ask for another position in the budget, because he knows, you know, how tight a budget is and what I was asking for. So I will go to the Board of Alderman.
But I, you still should ask.
Mm-hmm.
The person who doesn't ask is insured they won't get it.
Right.
So I think asking, I, I think, I appreciate more than I can say that you cared enough to come. Your child is indeed fortunate. Think how many children whose parents have, feel that way, but don't, don't have the courage. It takes courage, I think.
Thank you.
So you should be applauded, and your daughter. I hope she knows how lucky she is.
Thank you.
Dr. Murataki.
Yes, I'd like to respond to your, your question. You're in the right place. You're a little bit early, and your timing's off just a little bit.
I know.
Because nine, of the nine of us here, four of us won't be here at the next budget cycle, which is where this fight needs to be.
I can come back at the next budget cycle.[1071.13][1071.13](laughing)
And, you know, just, just, just so you know, a number of us on this horseshoe have fought for those positions and lost in the past.
Yes.
So, we have another shot at it. I won't be one of the ones here fighting for it.
Okay.
So, come back.
Okay, I will.
Make sure you let the four new people on the board, and remind the five that are, that are coming back, that that's an important thing. And thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. Just for full disclosure, Kristen and Eric live across the street from me, and I had no idea until about, I don't know, 4:30, when she said, "Where's the board meeting, and can I speak tonight?" So I had no knowledge of what would be presented. In fact, she wouldn't tell me.[1126.63][1126.63](laughing) But I, I thank you so much for coming in, and Dr. Murataki's right, it's something to be discussed at budget. We spent $1.7 million on remediation, so maybe it's a matter of reallocation within our existing budget, so we'll definitely look at it. So thank you so much for coming in, and please come back.
Okay, thank you very much, Howard. Thank you, Al.
Thank you very much.
Yes, Dottie?
I just want to say, as a former teacher at a Title I school, and we did at one point have after-school tutoring, it does make a big difference for most students. I have seen it, I've been an advocate for it. I worked, matter of fact, I worked with Ms. Tetler at Amherst Street when she was a reading teacher there, so it is very important to our students, and thank you for coming. I thought you did a great job advocating for not only your student, but all those students who need that extra help. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to your assistant.
Okay, thanks.[1191.33][1191.33](laughing)
Can I get a word in?
Oh, sure.
My wife's here.
Certainly.
You know, I appreciate when the parents come in and bring information into the board, because this is the only way that we get to know what is happening with the children. And in my 12 years on the board, I have also advocated very much for the three platforms, three parts of the platform, which was reading, math, and science. To get everybody up to speed, and to get them to be able to understand the things of the world and how it works, and, you know, how do you balance a checkbook? How do you take your savings account? And your interest on your mortgage? How do you know, with science, at least, how to make a light bulb light? You know, and if you can't read, how are you going to understand all these other things? So my advocacy has always been for those three areas. It was very important to grow into this world and at least have this basic foundation, which we can make us stronger by advocating for the kids and to see that they learn constantly in their classrooms. Have good teachers, have the, you know, mentors, so that they can flourish and grow. So it's very important. I'm fortunate, I am, my kids are all grown up and, and gone out, and they're all successful. But that is because my wife and I have been so involved in their education all the while. And it's so important for the parents to come in, just like you did, and just let us know what's happening, so that we can adjust our agendas to, whether it be reading, math, or science. Math is so important today, because a good math background ensures a good jobs and, you know, a good understanding of how everything works. So thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
All right, any other public comment? Okay, moving on, superintendent's comments.
Couple things. First of all, I just want to say thank you to the parent bringing that to our attention, and certainly will consider that when we talk about staffing for next year, and also programs as well. And we'll follow up on that at a later time. I'm very interested in the I-Ready scores, also the other data that, that we can look at. One student not making achievement is, and not meeting expectation is something that we all take seriously. It's not one person's responsibility. I hope you know that you have a, that my, my support in improving your child's scores and all the scores in, in the Nashua Public Schools. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. The superintendent's reports, I just want to be very, very brief, brief in the sense that it's, it's December, there are some transitions going on in the district, some things that are happening that are very nice for students. There've been a number of, what I would say, holiday events throughout the, the school that's been just phenomenal. I mean, I can't name them all. I've been to a couple of them in the, the schools and outside of the schools in the community. I was at one about two Sundays ago for the middle school, Elm Street. It was the River, the Riverside Cafe that they had some people there, and it was, it was at, it was at night, it was a Sunday night. Were you there?
I was.
You had friends there? Okay. It was well-attended. I was there for a little bit, and the kids did a very, very nice job. Something that I've been doing, that I made a commitment to, is that I've been visiting as many schools that I can. So last week, I had an opportunity to go to Elm Middle, Middle School in Penachuk for some Mosley's muffins, to again, extend an invitation to faculty and the community to come out and talk to me about anything they want. So again, I'm glad that the parent came to the board to do that, but I also encourage parents to come and talk to me during those sessions. I have one in the morning time and one in the evening. Last week, there was a Nashua Education Foundation, they had a fundraiser at Barnes &amp; Nobles, so there were selected people that were asked to come down and, and read to the students or to children in Barnes &amp; Nobles, and I certainly participated in that. By far, we are going to be in the beginnings of budget season when we come back in January, and so part of what I've been doing with my administrative team is that we started to compile our budget requests from different departments, directors, and individuals and principals throughout the school. With that said, we're looking to start to look at our needs, look at the, the cost of what it means to have a foundation budget, and certainly, when we get back in January, we're gonna be in the middle of the budget season. So please note that this is one of many meetings that we are having internally, but the meetings will certainly rev up when we return from the winter break. I did two tapings this week, last week, excuse me. One was for Nashua Strong with Harvey Key, and the Elm, I'm sorry, Fairground Middle School asked me to come and do a taping for their TV's production, and they just asked me some questions about the, my position and what I, what I do as the superintendent. I think if there are kids watching, and I think maybe some parents watching, they always ask, I got probably about, usually when you get many calls as superintendent, about four, not 14, but many calls today, you're wondering, "What is going on today? Is something happening in the district?" I recognize that we are anticipating some snow tomorrow. I'm very conservative. I like to go to school all the way up until June 30th, so please stay tuned. I don't have a decision right now. I don't care if you're a superintendent in Nashua or in Brockton, Massachusetts. It is the most difficult decision to make, because you're, you're up and you don't have control over Mother Nature. So with that said, I'll just say, I apologize if I make someone mad. I apologize, I did the best I could, but I make the interest of the best of our kids and for the safety of the district. So stay tuned.
Board response to superintendent's comments. So start over here, go around, anybody? Mrs. Ziem?
I just want to say, when Dr. Mosley was recognizing the board members, he keyed in on the strong points, I believe, of each member, and it is a reflection of the quality of this man. It is a reflection of the gift that he brings to this district. He was also, we had a Brentwood committee meeting today. It was the most inclusive meeting. It reminds me of the old phrase, "He is truly inclusive, not exclusive." And I believe for team building, there can be no greater skill, because when you are inclusive, people are going to, they're gonna participate, and the more people who participate in our district, our city, the stronger it's going to be. I leave this board knowing that you are in good hands. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ziem. Thank you, that means a lot.
Anyone, Mrs. Ohensie?
Thank you. In response to Dr. Mosley's comments about the parents coming in about extra specialists, could we also, and I know this is timely, because you're setting up the budget, so it was good that they came in when they did, could we also do something to have a volunteer program with parents? Either volunteers after school if, if we don't have the staff, or have workshops at PTOs or something to encourage the parents to help and to give them the tools? I know when we were adopting the Eureka Math, they had different video clips that they had available for parents. So maybe if we can key them into some of these tools, we can work as a team.
All options are open. I mean, anytime we can get that support, whether it's on a volunteer, you know, again, you know, I'm thinking out loud here, perhaps, you know, some of our high school students can come down and do some internships with, with the kids. I think that'd be wonderful. You know, maybe we might not be able to support, you know, financially, a person, but perhaps maybe we can support something around transportation for the kids, for the high school kids to come down to our elementary school to provide that. So I think all options are open. I'm not gonna say no to anything. I think it's a good idea to, to get the students the much support as we can.
Thank you.
I also want to just make note that the I-Ready scores that were showcased today were, were in September. And so, you know, one of my questions that I think about in my mind is, what type of supports can we provide students during the summer? supports can we provide students during the summer? So to prevent that regression of some of those skills that sometimes happens with some of our kids when they're not getting that instruction every single day. So even if it's an hour or two hours of, whether it's math or reading or math or anything academic, we want to try to support the kids during the summertime as well.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Kaufman?
Dr. Murataki? Yes, thank you very much. Reflecting on the superintendent's comments about, you know, putting new positions in, possibly math specialists. It comes to me that in the past, when we have lost the budget battle and had to surrender certain positions like math specialists or curriculum specialists, it was never in that first round of budget. It always came after the Board of Aldermen voted the final funding. And we basically had to trim additional money from our budget. And by that point in time, trimming budget meant trimming staff. And those were bitter defeats, but they happened again and again. So possibly this time around, it might be interesting if we could identify positions that from experience, we should have preserved. And then firewall those positions so that even after we have to go into that second cycle of cuts, that you protect those positions. Just a thought, thank you very much.
Mr. McIntyre?
I just wanted to say thank you to the outgoing board members. I really appreciate that whenever we have concerns, students, you guys listen to us and you try to make the changes that we want. So that really just makes, it makes a big impact on us in the schools. And just, I thank you for that. So thank you again.
Ms. Thomasetti, anything?
I just wanted to second what Cam said. I know that coming on the board was sort of a overwhelming thing, just because you're in a room full of adults. And we obviously are sitting here with all these opinions, but it was really nice that it was welcoming and you guys really wanted our opinions. I know also that there's a bunch of students or people, classmates, that's the word I'm looking for, of mine that have had you guys come in and visit their AP Gov classes or government-style classes like that. And they've wanted to say thank you because it really was important and valuable that they learned from people who are actually in politics and that sort of stuff. And another thing, I was actually, at the same time that you, Ms. Hohenzie, was talking about volunteering at the high schools, I actually wrote it down. So I know that there's a bunch of honor society kids and kids that have the ability and want to go help other people in the volunteering aspect. And if there was a program set up like that, I know that there could definitely be some win-win situations for everybody. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
Mr. Mosher?
I'm sorry? Yes, Mr. Mosher, did you have anything?
I, I think that, uh, Dr. Murataki made a statement there that I thought was very appropriate. And that was to identify the positions and firewall them so that we did not lose the steam that we need, you know, in mentoring and the very important positions that make the, you know, the school much more viable.
Okay, thank you. Budgets, just, there's nothing really from the Committee on Budget. Committee on Finance and Operations, I don't think that there's been anything. There's a meeting tomorrow, this week? Wednesday? And so there's nothing from them. Committee on Policy, Ms. Van Twyver?
The next policy meeting and the last one for this year is on the 19th. And we will be talking about the psychology policy that was recommended by Mrs. Hohenzie.
Thank you. Committee on Curriculum Evaluation, Dr. Murataki?
Yes, thank you very much. Our most recent meeting on curriculum and evaluation was held on November 28th. And I, the chair, showed up 15 minutes late for this meeting. So when I arrived, Ms. Hohenzie, rather, Ms. Van Twyver was doing a rather skillful job at chairing this meeting in my absence. And so she basically continued to chair that meeting for the rest of the meeting. However, we had some very interesting discussion topics. One of them was on the High School Program of Studies. And in your packets, it's 19-page packet, pages three through 19 are basically all of the recommendations that came for changes to the Program of Studies. We also had a very informative continuation of a discussion on data. And we focused on these Smarter Balance assessments, the SBAC, also the kneecap and the I-Ready scores. And so I think we learned a lot that day. And I have a motion. Would you like me to bring the motion forward? Okay.
You're the chairman.
All right. So the committee brings forth a recommendation to the full board to approve the recommendations, changes, and additions to the High School Program of Studies as presented by the administration on November 28th.
Second?
Thank you by Ms. Van Twyver. Is there any discussion? Mr. Mosher, do you have anything?
No, but I agree, I support the changes.
Excellent. So we'll have a roll call on the motion, please.
Mrs. Oden?
Yes.
Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Van Twyver votes yes. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mrs. Zine?
Yes.
Ms. Hohenzie?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes. Unanimous. Anything else?
Yes, the next curriculum and evaluation meeting, which will be the final meeting tonight, chair, is going to be a week from today. And it'll be at the School Administration Building at 5:30. And that concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you. Committee on Human Resources, Mrs. Zine?
Yes, the committee has two recommendations. The first recommendation is to approve the revised personnel list that dated December 11, 2017.
Second?
Seconded by Mrs. Hohenzie, is there any discussion? Mr. Mosher, you have that, a copy of that, I believe?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. If there is no discussion, roll call, please, on the motion to approve the personnel recommendation.
Mrs. Oden? Dr. Murataki?
Yes.
Van Twyver votes yes. Ms. Zine?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman?
Yes.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes.
It's unanimous. Oops, I'm terribly sorry. This is split over two pages here, so.
Mrs. Hohenzie, how do you vote?
Mrs. Hohenzie, I figured it. Sorry about that.
Excellent. And was there a second thing you had?
Yes, the second HR unanimously approved a motion by Mrs. Oden to move forward that the draft of November 9 to 17 submitted to the board by Mr. Kaufman labeled administrative interview requirements for assistant director, director, assistant principal, and principal be forwarded to the superintendent for review and comment. The superintendent's input should then be shared with the Human Resources Committee at a future meeting on a date that will be mutually agreeable. There's no vote necessary, that's for informational purposes only.
Excellent, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That concludes your HR?
That's it.
Liaison reports, anybody had time? No? Unfinished business, Dr. Mosley, on your board governance?
Just, I think it's appropriate just to table this until the new board is seated. So we'll be talking and bringing this back up to the new board sometime in January, if not in February, about board governance and how to move forward on that initiative.
Okay, thank you. We got something over there brewing?
They're telling me that we, that the full board needs to vote on the personnel recommendations. Did we vote on it?
Yes.
We did.
Yeah.
I guess they missed it and I did too.
Well, they might have had a side conversation going on there, but.
Thank you.
I believe you said yes.
Because you referred to the recommendations dated today's date.
Keep me in line. Last chance, Mrs. Zine.
Mr. Kaufman, did you have something?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
Dr. Mosley suggested that this item be tabled, but is there a vote?
I think it's just a term of speech. I don't think there's necessarily, I mean, there's nothing going on with it.
I agree that we should defer the discussion, but he used the word tabled, so that's procedural.
Yeah, no, no, I don't think there's any need for the board. It's not, it's not, it's not a motion that's been.
There's never been a motion.
No, there's nothing.
To even discuss this.
I think it's just a term that he used that essentially to defer it until next, did you say January?
From the next board is seated.
Yeah, I think the board should actually vote on this at some point. Right now, there's never been a vote by the board to consider this as something we want to do or not do. I'll defer it to the next board, it's clearly in their purview, but I just want to make the point, there's never been a vote on this by the board.
Yeah, but I don't think it's really relevant for this group to make that vote. So I think that we'll wait, you guys can wait until January and deal with it then. Okay, we have some non-public things that I don't think anything is going to result in a vote this evening. It's more just some issues that the board needs to be brought up to date on by the administration.
Mr. Farrington?
Yes, ma'am.
Should we vote to let public comment so that they won't?
That's where I'm going.
Okay.
Okay, so if there's no objection, I propose we move this, these non-public things to the end of the agenda. We'll go through public comments, board member comments.
So moved?
We got hands up and everything else. Mrs. Oden?
I was intending to bring up something under new business. I don't think most of us realize that our student board members' term is up tonight. They do not go until the end of June. Don't you, you don't listen to me.
Really, I didn't know that.
I was talking to Ms. Thomasetti, and when she ran for the representative to the board at North, she ran unopposed. She's not sure.
Who would dare?
She's not sure if there is a candidate running for the board at North. I talked to Mr. McIntyre, and there is no one running for student board from South. Speaking to them, and I think they probably could speak to the issue better, is they often feel when you get, when your term ends mid-year, you've already established a relationship and it's very hard for a new member to come in. And I can let them talk to it. So I think we ought to make a little plan, just in case we don't have a student member, if we could extend their terms if there's nobody to fill in, because the input is real valuable to us.
I agree. Has it been publicized in the school?
So.
I don't have a free for all, just go ahead.
Mr. Fenland and I, Mr. Fenland's the Senate advisor. So we had someone in line to run for it, but they decided not to do it at the last minute. So we don't have anybody right now, nobody has stepped up to want to do it yet. So I'm not quite sure where that's going right now, so.
I know, oh, I'm sorry. I know that at North, there might have been a few people that have taken the application, but I haven't heard seriously from anybody back that, I'm doing this, I've turned the application in, I've taken the application, but a lot of people are, I'm not sure what the issue is, but of wanting to take the application. But Cam and I were talking about possibly changing, not just this cycle, but changing it so that we run academic school years, because it doesn't make sense for us personally to go from like calendar years, just because that is the middle of our senior year or the middle of a academic year, and it doesn't make as much sense for us to run that way.
That would require a policy change?
Mrs. Hohenzie?
Thank you. I know that there is some interest at North. I've spoken to a couple of students, at least, you know, one or two. And I don't know if that it's well-publicized, if they know that the election is upon them. I think that could be the problem.
I know that it's on the announcement, it's been on the announcements for at least five, it's been on the announcements at least for a week. I know that the announcements are sort of hard to hear, but it is up in our Student Activities Center. There's a huge, if you go outside on her door, you can see it there, it's all in her office. It is, if you know where to get the stuff, which is pretty easy, because she's the only person, Ms. Flanagan is really the only person that you'd get that sort of stuff from, but there, the sustained interest isn't as there.
I had also heard of a student at North that was interested in running too, but I don't, I mean, I'm not about to announce their candidacy, so.
I was just thinking, if nobody does apply, could we make a motion to extend their service until somebody steps forward? Or if nobody steps forward, wait until the end of the year? And they could serve out another six months if nobody steps forward, because I think it's important to have.
Yeah, no, I think these, I mean, everybody that we've had has been great. You guys are really terrific, you bring a lot to the table. When is the election scheduled? When do they normally have it? Before or after holiday break?
Before, I'm pretty sure. I know that applications are due this Friday, I think, at least at North, or due the 15th. I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, in past years at South, the elections have been in November, like middle to late November, and they, I, the interest isn't as big as it was the past two years for it. I'm not, I'm not quite sure why, but, so, nobody has, nobody at South has really, I wouldn't, there were probably people, if you asked them, they would probably say, yeah, I'll do it, but it hasn't really been like the, oh, I want to do this sort of thing, like.
You guys have set the bar so high, it's pretty intimidating. Can I, can I suggest that for us to act tonight might get in the way of the process so we let the process run if they get to their, excuse me, if they get to their date and nobody has applied? We have a special meeting scheduled for the 19th, I think?
29th?
The 19th.
The 19th of this month. And so that should be after your elections. And so if they hold, if they, if the date comes and goes and there's no election, then I would suggest that the board could act, and thank you for bringing this to our attention. But I think that the board could act on the 19th and do something like that, because you can do anything you want. Yes?
Thank you. During my report, I've neglected to thank both these two students for hosting policy matters for me this whole year. They did an excellent job, and I hope you'll be around next year to continue it. Thank you.
Okay, over here, Mr. Kaufman, Ms., okay. Okay, Mrs. Hohenzie, and then Mr. Kaufman and Mrs. Zine, did you, okay. So it's going that order.
I just got a text from someone saying there were four people running at North, so I think there should be some interest. They're watching the meeting and just letting me know.
Yeah, no, no, I just, I know that I haven't heard of anyone actually turning the application in. I know that people have taken it and the same thing happened last year, but I'm happy to be wrong.
Mr. Kaufman and Mrs. Zine?
Thank you. So I don't have a problem with the board since, at a special meeting taking emergency action, but I think it's presumptive of us to even ask these young people. I mean, when you take an office, you make a commitment and it's from time till when it ends. And your head is in the game until that point in time, and then you move on to the next thing. So for us to certainly want to continue working with you, don't get me wrong, but at the same time, you've performed your service. And I think we should at least know if you would, has any, Ms. Thomasetti, would you consider staying on the board if there were a need?
Yeah.
Okay, and Mr. McIntyre, I ask you the same.
I would love to stay on the board.
Okay, well, so I'm thrilled to know that, because I wouldn't want to presume that you would just because we're in a.
Let's not go too far here. I don't want to create the impression with the people that are watching that we've already made arrangements.
No.
As much as I have enjoyed working with them, so let's just, let's just let it play out and then on the 19th, 20, the 19th, yes, we can decide what's, has passed by at the schools.
I have something to say about that, too.
Sure, go ahead.
I think that's a good idea, that we move to the 19th, and then we can have ready to determine that we might want to do that during the academic year. So that is a service that continues through by the students right through until the time the school ends in June, and then picks up again with the new members as we would pick and then picks up again with the new members, as, as we would pick up again in September. So it would give them a unbroken time, and also give them time to, over the, the school breaks, to do the necessary researches that they may have in their mind to bring as a, as a project or as information to the board when it starts up again in September.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Zee.
So I think it's a good idea.
Well, that's exactly what I was going to say, I think it should go to policy to be looked at, to see if we want to change the policy. And again, going to, when we have our new board members, let them weigh in on it, because it, but it sounds logical, what you're saying. I didn't even, in all the time I've been here, I never picked up on that, and I said to myself, "Santa, I can't believe you never picked up on that." So it was good that you brought it to our attention.
Okay, so we're all set on this, we're going to see what happens at the schools, and then we'll move appropriately on the 19th if need be, at one or both schools. Anything else other than that on new business, Mr. Kaufman?
Thank you.
Thank you, new business. I move that the current board recommend to the newly formed board in January to continue the investment and deployment of the academ, at, sorry, deployment of the academic assessment and remedial effort reported by Dr. Brown on June 26, 2017.
Get all that? Is there a second?
Here you go.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Hoence, okay, Mr. Kaufman, now tell us what this is all about.
Yes, good idea.
Are you talking about the pilot program from last year?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, as Mr. Farrington alluded to, we had a very successful pilot program from March until, I believe it was May, or possibly June, where there were several hundred, four or 500, I don't recall the exact number, of students that participated in, in most schools, not all schools. But during this period of time, we used the iReady diagnostic capability developed in-house to identify a particular question, and that the student got wrong, we're able to identify what the preceding requirements for knowledge might be, the precursor skill might be, and then through remedial work with extra tutoring that was done after school, those students on average were over 54% higher performance in just three months. It was a very successful pilot. Dr. Brown recommended that we continue and move it forward. This board never took any formal action, I think largely because of the change in administration. It just, it kind of slipped by us, but I don't want to lose the opportunity. This board is very familiar with this program, the new board does not know about it, and I would hate to see it die on the vine. I think it would be a big mistake for us to ignore the homegrown capability that we have. So I encourage my fellow board members to vote yes, so that the new board will know about this and be encouraged to continue the investment in it. It helped our students, it was dramatic improvement in a short period of time. We haven't seen that kind of performance boost before. Thank you.
Okay, just, I'm sorry.
I'm just seconded.
Okay, it was already, yeah, it was already seconded over here. But just for the, for the benefit of people who may not be up to speed, there were 270 students that participated, and the iReady spring proficiency data indicated that 143 of the 267 participating students made significant progress towards being on grade level. 104 students in the program, who the data indicated were below level at the beginning of the year, finished the year on level. Thirty-nine students who were two or more grade levels below in the fall, finished the year one level below. But there was a question about, they didn't realize as much success, it was first graders and second graders, and they had much more success with second graders than first. And so I think that before we, the board commits to doing this more, I think there needs to be a little more looking at the, the process and what, what took place, and try to find why it wasn't as successful with first graders as it was with second graders. And maybe that will help the district, the board, whatever, next year to decide where to focus their attention. There was 60, let me see, $64,000 that was used for the program. Mrs. Zee.
Before we, two thoughts, before we vote on this tonight. I wonder if we should, if that should be something, since it will be something ongoing, that our new board members will have to support. I wonder if we should wait and give them a chance to weigh in, not only weigh in, but to be educated to the program. And secondly, I would like to hear from Dr. McKinney and Dr. Mosley as to their thoughts. I think to make a decision without at least having them say to me if they have any thoughts on this would be remiss, so, thank you.
Dr. Mosley?
Yeah, I mean, first of all, I'm aware of the program. This gets back to a little bit about what my administrative team would like to have happen in the district. We had no idea that this is going to be brought up at the meeting, we had no idea that this was going to be talked about. And so in some respects, we were a little bit unprepared for it. And in some respects, I'd like to show the public exactly what this program felt and looked like. Also, when you're proposing something like this, it was only for select schools. Select schools were, had, had an opportunity to participate in this. It also left out students that actually did not have transportation, but students that could find their own transportation. We saw today, a parent that showed up here today, that did, that would love to have that remediate, remediation program, but yet didn't qualify for it. So when we want to roll out a program, we want to do it right. You want to connect it to something. You want to do it so everybody knows exactly what's going to happen here. We want to make sure that our principals and our, you know, parents know, know exactly where the end game is. And not, this isn't a criticism of the program or anything like that, but when we define success and expectations, I want to make sure we're all on the same page here. So if we do this program, if it's $64,000 or $70,000, okay. So is that $70,000 that's going to go into all of our elementary schools? Are we all going to have that? And that's the case, and that, that is a budget consideration for this next board. And that's going to, and you put that in, something's coming out. So we have to prioritize, and getting back to Dr. Marutaki's point, there are certain things that you made the recommendation for firewalls. I agree with you. So we can't do everything at once here. I would like to have known that this was coming, so that we can talk a little bit about that, and, and certainly have my administrative team look into it. There are, the measure that you're using is iReady, it was an after-school program. But one of the things I, that, that Garth and I were talking about is, was it the program itself that made the, the increase in the students? But was it the instruction that they were receiving all day that factored into it? So in other words, when you're looking at the test scores, because the teachers are there teaching every single day, I want to be very clear, not one program made that student, made, increased that student's program, I mean, that, those students' scores. It was a combination of all-day instruction with that teacher, with the program, that might have factored into that. So there's a lot of different things that need to be considered when you're looking at data like that.
Oh, over here, so.
I know.
Help yourself.
Yeah, yeah, you've.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much.
And Dr. Marutaki will follow you, I'm just looking at some information.
I think everybody knows that I'm very much in favor of these results that we're getting from iReady, and the success of this program. However, I, I don't know that I can commit to this the way it is written, because it says, "Recommend to the newly formed board in January to continue the investment and deployment of the academic." Now, it costs us 60-something thousand dollars, that's a budget item. So I think that needs to come up with the, the new budget, and also with the new board. So I will be voting against this.
Dr. Marutaki?
Yes, thank you very much. I, I did like the results that were presented on this program this past summer. But I am not comfortable in voting yes on this motion, simply because I do not think that this body can essentially commit the future body to any course of action. So I will be voting against, against, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Oden.
When I look at the $64,000, I don't remember us putting that into the budget last year.
You didn't.
So where did that money come from?
It was $64,000 from a dropout prevention grant that was about to expire. There was, I think, if I recall correctly, that money was, that grant, grant was written to hire somebody for dropout prevention, and they were unable to find somebody to fill the, to meet the job description. And they, they were getting near, getting to a point where they weren't going to be able to spend it on that resource, and they went to whatever the grant source was, and I don't see it here. But they went and asked if they could use it for this purpose. Twelve schools participated, first and second graders, you know, and the numbers of students, like, there were 25 students from Amherst, 239 from Bicentennial, but only one from Ledge, one first grader from Ledge. And so I don't know, like I said, there are, there are some details that need, that I think need to be looked at before the, I would suggest, before the board next year commit funding to something. You need, I think you need to understand why it was successful in second and not as successful in first, how they were selected, all of that. But I, having said all that, if I was going to be on the board, I would be encouraging the district, the administration, everybody to be looking at this and, and understanding it better.
Well, I, I, I think that's important, but if we commit to that for this year, we haven't put that in the budget. That grant money might not be available, and that's a lot of money. We instituted all-day kindergarten this year, and I think probably it cost us more than we thought. I think we had to add a couple more teachers. So I think there was more furniture, I know that was expensive. I think it probably cost a little bit more than we thought it was going to cost, so I'm reluctant to, to tie the next board into $64,000 when, when we don't have a clue at this point. I think from my experience, from what I saw with the Title, Title I funds and Title II, I think we could get money for the title school, Title I schools to, to run a program like this, but that's not a decision to make now. So I, I'm reluctant to tie, to, to say we are going to do this when we don't have a clue where we're going to get the money at this point.
I, I totally agree, I think it deserves more consideration. Who are you pointing at?
Dr. McKinney wanted to speak, and out of courtesy, I would like to hear.
I just wanted to share, Mr. Kaufman shared that the iReady results from that program at the last curriculum evaluation meeting, and we were hoping to talk about it at the next meeting as well. And what he shared with me, I shared with the elementary principals, and I'll be meeting with them later this week. And that was the first time they had seen that report. So I'm hoping that you would consider hearing from the principals who made the program happen, and were in touch with the teachers, and be able to give a full and complete report back before making any further decisions. Thank you.
Uh, I've got, Mr. Kaufman, Mrs. Hoence, are you back again?
Yeah, I'm back again.
Uh, thank you. I'd just like to address a couple of comments that Dr. Mosley made. My intention for this program would be for every student who needed it. And arguably, going forward, I think there should be testing in the middle school as well, in case the kids find themselves in medical, middle school, and that they would still have help. Like I said earlier, we spent $1.7 million on remedial staff, I believe. And I fully believe this kind of a program could be integrated into what our people are currently doing. This would be another diagnostic tool, that's how I envision it. So in my mind, I don't think we have to spend any extra money. But that's a topic for discussion. I know there are two other members that want to speak to this, but I would be willing to withdraw my motion.
Mrs. Hoence.
Thank you. I'm glad we had the conversation, and my understanding, and maybe the motion needed to be more general, it was a recommendation. It wasn't binding, it sort of encouraged them to explore it, and I think that was the, you know, the theory I had when I seconded. It's something that's important, and as we go into budget, and as they develop the budget, for them to just look and consider that. And I don't know whether we need a motion or not, because we're not trying to bind them, just encourage them. But I'll withdraw it if Mr. Kaufman withdraws his.
With a couple of head nods, it looks like it's withdrawn.
I will formally withdraw my motion.
And second, and Ms. Van Taver, you still get to talk.
Thank you very much. I wanted to ask Dr. McKinney, you said that the principals who participated in this did not get the report on iReady, this report that we're referring, did you say that?
The principals who coordinated the programs at those 11 schools had not seen a document that Mr. Kaufman produced at the last C and E meeting.
They did not?
No, ma'am.
Well, in the new year, I will be very vocal about raising our scores. Been on this board for six years, and we've talked about reading and writing and arithmetic at grade level ever since my report, ad hoc committee, went on that. And we haven't made much progress, so I will be very vocal about how things go in the year, to make sure that we get these grades up. It's horrendous that any child from this district can't read and write at grade level, it's just ridiculous, so. But I will be voting against this. Oh, it's gone, so we don't have to do it, thank you.
Dr. McKinney, did you have something brief?
Yes, sir. I would just ask if we could just also include a review of the benchmark assessment scores. We're looking at reading assessments in comparison to iReady for a proper or more accurate description of reading performance of our students. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? No, good. And now we're back to where I was before, so if there's no objection, we're going to move the non-public stuff to the end, which would automatically bring us to public comment period. Just like that, just like magic.
Come on down.
It's what I do. Does, is there any public comment? Seeing none, board member comments? Mrs. Oden.
Yeah. Last Sunday, I had the opportunity to go to Wyndham High to see the final day of the first Lego League competition. I believe we had, I know we had at least one, maybe two teams from Nashua, the Tough, Tough Tex Junior. I think the, the high school has Tough Tex, and they have a junior team with the Lego League. But if you, you haven't been to one of the competitions, it's extremely encouraging to see the enthusiasm, to see the work, to see the sportsmanship of, of all the teams, supporting each other, not only competing, but supporting. And we've talked about BAE so many times. We are so fortunate to have BAE in our city. They are so generous with their time, with the volunteers that, that support this. Matter of fact, the, the person who emcees it has done it for 16 years, it's a tremendous amount of work. Dave Price, he was a teacher here in Nashua at, I believe, when it was just one high school. And he was saying, the first Lego League started about 16 years ago, it had about maybe 200 teams. It is now two, up to 235,000 participants, and it's globally. So I, if you ever get a chance to go to one of the competitions, it really is, it's encouraging to see what our students and the people who work with our students are doing. I guess I want to thank Mrs. Zee. I want to thank Dr. Marutaki, I want to thank Mr. Farrington, and I want to thank Mr. Halliwell for all the work they have done on the behalf of our students. We don't always agree on everything, people have different opinions, but every member on this board tries to do what's best for kids. And there's, there's so much more to being on the board than this two- or three-hour board meeting every other week. There's hours and hours of, of work that go into it. And I think everybody takes that seriously, everybody took it seriously, so I thank you for all your, your time and effort. And if we don't see Cam and Grace back again. if we don't see Cam and Grace back again, I want to thank both of you sincerely for what you have brought to this board. You, you have been willing to share your opinions. They've been valuable, and whether you're sitting in those seats or not, you're welcome to come any night and speak, and you will have all ears. So thank, thank you so much and best of luck. Thank you.
Mrs. Ziem, did you have something you wanted to share?
I do have one quick thing. When Dr. Mosley was talking about the board members that are leaving, and he was talking about Dr. Murataki. Always in my mind, Dr. Murataki's greatest contribution is that he is singularly responsible for having ROTC in our district. That program is a drop dead success. The kids will love it. I mean, they make you proud when they come and speak of it, and I just, I can't, I think that that, I think it's a direct result of your efforts. I was here, I watched you spearhead it, I watched you fight for it, and I think you can be proud of it. I think it's something you can, when you die, you can say to yourself, I did one good thing and I know it was good. So I thank you personally for that, and I thank everybody for giving me the honor of serving. Thank you.
That's twice tonight I've heard people reference you dying, Dave.
It wasn't a wish.
Mrs. Hohensy.
Thank you. I too would like to thank the two student members. If they don't come back, that they were great. If you have things to share, come on back. Don't be strangers. To the four departing board members.
Exiting, exiting. Do not die.
Oh, I see. So Mr. Farrington, okay, retiring. Again, don't be strangers. I'm sure I'm going to reach out to one or two at least to get information if we get to an impasse, because I learned a lot from the board members that are leaving. They had a wealth of knowledge, and I don't think that I would know as much about the district if it wasn't for Mrs. Ziem and her patients explaining over and over again so many things. Dr. Murataki always had an open ear, was always willing to talk, and I learned a lot from Mr. Halliwell and Mr. Farrington too, so thank you for your service.
Mr. Kaufman.
Thank you. I too want to thank our student members. Maybe we'll see you again. I hope that's the case, or not. It'll be good, on the same token, I'd like to see more participation from the students, but in either way, thank you so much. I also want to acknowledge the hard work and commitment to public education of our outgoing, I'm calling them outgoing as compared to departing or exiting. Outgoing, I think is a little better. Outgoing board members collectively, Mrs. Ziem, Mr. Halliwell, Mr. Farrington, and Dr. Murataki have served this, served this district for more than, my calculation was 35 years, because I wasn't certain. Dr. Mosley said 42 in his statement. Any way you look at that, that's huge, and there's a lot of institutional knowledge that is going to leave us, and their expertise in institutional knowledge will be missed. I guess I'll just leave it there. I believe that the new board members coming on board, we, they have some big shoes to fill, but I think they're fully capable of doing that, and I look forward to working with them. And I'll just say good night to everybody and my best wishes to you all for a happy Hanukkah or a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, healthy New Year, as we like to say. Thank you.
Ms. Van Taver.
Thank you. I want to tell you that I attended the Wizard of Oz presentation at North and it was excellent. The gal that played Dorothy was most beautiful voice. She just was, and I think most of us agree that the lion was pretty good, too. It was fun. I always loved to go to these plays that are put on by the high school and the middle schools. I haven't gotten to the Elm Street yet, but I will. And I want to thank, it's tough at the end of an election year to have to say goodbye to your people on your board. Dr. Murataki, I want to thank you for your service. I've always enjoyed your conversations and your push to make sure that we had IT ready to take the tests, SBAC, and also iReady. You really pushed hard for that. I remember sitting over there listening to you all the time and.
I'm in core.
And, well, I wasn't going to mention that, because we're kind of mixed about that, but your, your opinions have always been appreciated. Mrs. Ziem, you and I go back a long time, don't we? I'm going to tear up with this, I'm sure. I want to thank you for all you have done. I know how hard and how much you love this district and work for it. I want to thank you for encouraging me to run for this position. You have given me a career, another career in my life, particularly my retirement, and I didn't realize how passionate I would be about the education in this district. We've not, the last couple of years have been tough for me, really, I want you to know that, because we have been on the opposite side of many issues, but I have never, ever doubted your intent for the best education in this, and I hope that you have never questioned mine. It's going to be tough not to see you, really.
I'll call you and give you an earful.
Well, please do, and I hope that we can play Phase 10 once again.
Yes.
Mr. Halliwell, this man is remarkable. He, he was my president when I first got on the board, and I enjoyed, he was taking the board around to visit all the schools. We had a lot of fun doing that, and the man is, I'm going to really miss him because he's getting us through all these budget periods that we've done. I've been through six of them now and I still don't understand half the stuff. And of course, his donuts choose. And then there's Mr. Farrington. George, I'm going to really miss you. You've been exemplary in your dedication to this district. You've never, you've only missed one board meeting that I know of where I got to fill in for you.
Sorry.
Yeah, well, you, I could have had more training, but you've always impressed me with your ability to weather the stormy sessions that we've had, and we've had quite a few of them. I wish I had more of that talent. I think you have tried to train me up, but I didn't even get that well. And I also, I know you're not going to believe this, but I'm really thankful that you did ask me to be policy chair, even though I took it grudgingly. I have come to love it and I've enjoyed it immensely. You've attended, I think, all but two of my meetings that I've, I've kept track, and you've never tried to take it over and you've always spoken up, well, to dominate, you know what I mean? And you, and you've, you've always offered your opinion when you felt it was really necessary, and you were a big plus to see you sitting out there. When I call this meeting, the organization meeting, to order in January, it's going to be tough not to see these four faces in front of me. It really is. I've enjoyed working with each one of you, and I, I hope that you will come back and participate, and I want to make sure that none of you change your email or your telephone numbers, because I'm sure that we'll be calling for information and help. So I wish you well.
Thank you. Dr. Murataki.
Yes, thank you very much. This is probably my final meeting as a, at the full board. I know there's a special meeting on the 19th. I won't be here because I'll be on an airplane. And what I wanted to do was to actually go back to one of my very, very first meetings as a freshly elected member of the school board. The, the staff discovered while we were talking about the minorities and our immigrant populations and how we had close to two dozen different languages that we handled in this, in this district, how diverse a group we were. I actually mentioned that my very first language, reading, writing, and speaking, was Japanese, Nihongo. And so I had an administrator look at me and they said, "Dr. Murataki, you're what we would call an ESL, in English as a second language, or an English language learner, an ELL, but you don't sound like an ELL. You don't have an accent." Well, that's in large part because of education. So a person that started life speaking, reading, and writing Japanese, or any other language that's not English, can actually master that by the time they're into secondary school, and that's a fact, and I'm living proof. So by way of farewell, I would all like to wish you, minasama, sayonara. Thank you very much.
That's beautiful. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mosley? I mean, Mr. Mosher.
Mr. Mosher, yeah.
Mr. Mosher's here. And I listened to Dr. Murataki. He's been a very interesting man to, to speak to, and on many occasions when we were running for state rep, I had the occasion to stop with my wife and, and talk with him. I found it very fascinating that, you know, he could be, you know, from the Japanese and without an accent. And it brought to mind my own climb through the academics in adult education, which in sometimes has been very difficult too, because I had to also get away from an accent that originated in Flatbush, you know, Brooklyneese. That was, that was a thing, and to work at that so that it was not a distraction when I was in front of a classroom and like at Hesa College and trying to teach computer electronics to a group of people that were, you know, like first grade students, but only bigger and heavier. The people that, we've had the occasion to work with there and, you know, Bob Halliwell and, and George and all the rest, and see some of the other ones that have, you know, kind of retired from the, from the board, that they all, we all have brought some, what would you say, collective wisdom in our drapes through, through life. You know, whether it was with a well company and, or whether it was like myself with dealing in transportation and right from being a helper on up to a superintendent of a mechanical shop myself. We've all brought our particular expertise into the, the Board of Education. And business savvy and the mechanics, the, the learning curves, it's all been a part of it. And, you know, whether we were piloting locomotives or flying an airplane, right, George? That we've all come a long ways in whatever we have done. And I pride myself that through dedication to, to the learning, that I have been able to attain, you know, high status in the transportation field, especially in the mechanical departments. And I look to the sciences like, like Bob Halliwell, you know, as a meteorologist and working with the, and the higher education of, and the scientific aspects of his business. We have all brought that, that wisdom in, and we have all put it to, to work together for the edification of our children, and that would be all of them. We can't just say, well, it's, it's my child or their child, but it's all of the children that we have in the, in the district. You know, all 12,000 of them. We, we love them all and we want them all to be learned and successful in whatever they put their hand to do. And I think that all of us, all of us that have put in the time and the effort and the, you know, followed our opinions and our, our learning, we've done this all for the district. And I congratulate all of those that are leaving us, and I know I'm going to miss my friends that I've had for the, so many years now. Thank you guys for a job well done, and whatever you set your hand to do, I know you're going to be successful. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. So that's everybody but my turn. I'm glad that Mrs. Oden reminded, reminded us this evening that you guys may or may not be back, but you guys have been terrific. You bring great insight, you're very well spoken, you're very, a terrific benefit to the board. I'm going to go an entirely different way. I'm going to start with a couple of comments on the election, and this isn't sour grapes, this isn't anything, I'm, I'm good. But a couple of general observations as a parent, a grandparent, taxpayer, and before I begin, I want to remind you that I spent 30 years as a member of a union, so I understand that sometimes the membership agrees with the official position of the union leadership and sometimes not so much. Secondly, as regards the folks who were elected both to this board and to the Board of Aldermen, I don't know any of them very well. I hope I get to know them better, but I have no reason to think that they will be anything but the best board members ever. As a father, grandfather, board member, I've always thought one of the most important things we can teach our children is to be independent, critical thinkers. It's a very important aspect of their personal and professional lives, and with that view, I have to say it was disappointing to stand at the polls and watch union members pass out voting lists to citizens as they approached the polls. Of course, some folks refused the list, others stuck it in their pocket, but in the end, the list represented the final results. That evening, the NTU sent an email to the membership announcing all of NTU COPE's recommendations this evening, were elected this evening. And it also went on to thank an individual member who had worked hard recruiting candidates that would support, quote, "our values and our, help, and help our city move forward." The NTU candidate survey asked, among other things, about candidate views for overriding the cap and outsourcing positions. The six Aldermen who regularly oppose the cap override are gone, and the new board members have stated they are opposed to outsourcing. My concern is that in the spring, and this is the connection that just coincidentally happened tonight, the district iReady and Smarter Balance test results indicated that about 60% of our students in grades three through eight were performing below grade level in reading and math, which I think should be a number one concern for the community and the NTU. I understand 100 people being concerned about their employment future, but 60% of those students in those grades represents roughly 3,000 students, and we should be concerned about their future. Moving on, I want to thank my family for their support, patience, and understanding. As you new folks will learn, the time commitment can be significant. There'll be lots of evenings you will leave your family when you'll have to cast, when you'll have to attend a meeting, negotiations, hearings, or some other thing that requires your participation. There will also be times when you'll have to cast a vote that is unpopular somewhere in the community, and even though they had nothing to do with your decision, the vote can, in a way, attach to a family member as well as to you. I'm not going to name people tonight, because I know, I know me, and I know I'll leave out someone and feel bad about it later. Suffice to say, I've enjoyed the work on the board. I've made good friends here and in the district. Everywhere I've gone in the district, I've met good, hardworking, professional people who care. They were always helpful and almost always smiling. I'm extremely pleased that I was able to be a part in expanding full-day kindergarten to all of our elementary schools. I was very pleased to have the opportunity to visit Ms. Matea's kindergarten class at Main Dunstable just last week. Not surprisingly, their abilities were varied, but their enthusiasm and eagerness to learn was evident and due in no small part to their wonderful teacher. I've learned a great deal about education, and now I intend to focus more specifically on Eureka Math, so I can help my grandchildren with their homework. This district offers a great number of opportunities for students, but we often fail to make the necessary connection with many of them. As a board member, you have to keep your eye on the ball and not get distracted by the needs of a relatively small segment of the total student population. They shouldn't be ignored, but a targeted response while trying to move the but a targeted response while trying to move the entire district forward will give you your best chance for success. The needs of those 3,000 students I mentioned need to be addressed and something done to reduce the number going forward. I urge you not to abandon the goal of getting as many students as possible reading and doing math on grade level by the end of third grade. If you get tired fighting the battle, think about that fourth or fifth grader who is a year or more behind, and how hard they are having to fight to not fall farther behind, let alone catch up. I'm obviously not going to get into the data debate tonight. There are people in the district who say these scores aren't accurate representations of our students' abilities. I will acknowledge they are not the only measure of learning. But if you continue to hear about the need for more remediation, 1.7 million, did you say, Howard? At the secondary level, and if you continue to have graduated students requiring remediation in math or language arts when they get to a post-secondary school, you better get into the data and find out why. Obviously could carry on here. I love talking education, but I know the Patriots are playing tonight, and I think they've already kicked off. I thought about what sort of wise advice I could give to the board members, both the new and the experienced going forward, and decided to fall back on the advice I gave my student pilots before their first solo flight. Have a good time. Be careful. Don't do anything stupid. And bring the airplane back in one piece. Now we need a motion to go into a non-public session. So moved by Mrs. Ziem, seconded by?
Second.
Mrs. Hoence, and that would be under RSA 91A colon 32C. And, I'm sorry?
The time.
Oh, well, we got to, we got to do the vote.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, and so we'll do that by roll call?
Yeah, what was it, 2C?
Yes, A32C.
And it was me.
Doesn't feel like 8:30. It feels later. I've been up since.
Dr. Murataki.
Yes.
Van Twyber votes yes. Mr. Mosher.
Yes.
Mrs. Ziem.
Yes.
Mr. Hoence.
Yes.
Mr. Kaufman.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington.
Yes. Okay, we're in non-public at 8:35. Clocks are catching up. If you, if anybody wants to take a stretch or whatever, just make it quickly, because